Special meeting of July 7, 2025, the special village board meeting to order. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can everybody please rise? Trustee Arnett, shall I lead the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the ground indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Arnett. Does anybody in the audience have any public comments they would like to make at this point going once? Yes, sir. Come on up to the microphone.
I've had three visits, but thank you for the opportunity to talk with you.
Sure.
My name is Han Kim, and I lived in North Hoffman Estates for 20 years. I live right across the street from Holy Family.
Okay.
I like to take the occasional walk to Jalisco up there. I think the last couple of years, there's been, I think, a rise in e-scooters traversing through the sidewalk, and maybe three or four times almost got hit. These are maybe school-aged kids, go really fast, around 30, 40 miles per hour. The sidewalk is usually four and a half feet wide, right?
Right.
So they're very silent, right? So you don't hear them coming forward or backwards. So I think there's some public safety issues with that, and also these e-scooters, e-bikes, you know, hoverboards, whatever you call them, they're on the streets, right? And I had a couple of occasions where I almost backed into one of them out of my driveway. You don't hear them. There's no, like, sensors that can pick up things going up and down, so I would like to request the board in possibly putting a greater ordinance. I think Hinsdale last month put up ordinance regarding fines.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
This is on our agenda for the Transportation Committee tonight. Do you want to just speak then rather than now?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I thought this was an opportunity to talk about that, yeah, when you said public.
Yeah, actually, this is more for people who are applying for commissions.
Okay, so.
It'll come up after this meeting's over.
Yeah.
You have the opportunity to speak.
We'll hear you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to additional business. We have a couple of interviews. Is Jennifer Dobbins here? Come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself, Jennifer.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Jennifer Dobbins, and I've been living in Hoffman Estates for about 24 years. I am a mother of a lot of children, six kids. I'm a wife to a husband, and I'm a registered nurse, and I would like to be on the committee. I was introduced to the committee, actually, by Catherine.
Okay, Catherine.
Yeah. I met her a year ago in the gym, and I didn't know anything about what was going on in Hoffman Estates after living here for so long, and I saw how committed she was, how hardworking she was, and she invited me to, you know, some of the events, and I was so impressed and intrigued, and I helped her, you know, for the rest of the events. I helped, although I wasn't on the committee, so I just decided, you know, I want to stand by her, support her, and work with her.
Okay, well, thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, sure.
You have any questions, Trustee Palafis?
No, thank you for volunteering and.
Oh, yeah.
Glad we have.
Of course. This is an opportunity for me and my kids, you know, to see, you know, that there is good. I want to make a difference in the community. I want to reach out to people, because I'm kind of an introvert. Kind of, you might not think that, but I'm starting, I want to get out there and, you know, be, make a difference.
Well, that's great.
Yes, because I love Hoffman Estates.
Great. Trustee Noel?
No questions, but thank you.
Oh.
It'll be fun. You'll love it.
Of course. Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Trustee Mills?
Just want to thank you.
Oh, sure.
For volunteering.
Of course.
And welcome you. Now, are you, what is your work schedule now? Will you still be able, do you work in days?
Well, right now, I'm PRN, so, you know, I have, I'm flexible right now, but, I mean, it can change.
No, I just meant, you know, so you'd be able to work it into your schedule, then the meetings and everything?
Oh, yeah. I'll do the best I can.
That'd be great. Well, I think you'll love it, and we appreciate you getting involved.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Have fun.
Of course.
Hey, Trustee Stanton?
Are you, are you working currently at the Morings or not?
In the what?
The Morings. You have listed employer name, the Morings.
Yes, the Morings of Arlington Heights right now.
Okay, that's where you are, okay.
Yes.
And do we have an opening at the Cultural Awareness Commission now? We do? Okay. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Oh, that's it?
Hey, Trustee Arnett?
I have no questions, but thank you for coming in and volunteering.
Trustee Kinnane?
I'll echo the same words that Trustee Arnett said, and thank you very much for your time, and we look forward to having you a part of our community. Thank you.
Great. We'll make your appointment on July 21. You don't have to be at the meeting, but you will be notified. Okay, thank you very much for volunteering.
Nice meeting you guys.
Nice meeting you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Take care.
So, Officer Hussein?
That's me, yes.
Okay. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'm a mom of three, 15-year-old, 11-year-old, and 6, 7-year-old. I'm a full-time IT consultant.
Ah.
What else should I say? I've been with my company for almost 20 years now, and I am a youth mentor for a nonprofit organization. I don't know if you guys heard Ikna Relief. So I help the youth program there, coming up with events on a monthly basis. It's mostly planned by the youth, but I'm mostly there for guidance, handling the finances and organization of it.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Trustee Kinnane?
None at this time. Thank you so much for your interest in applying and being a volunteer.
Thank you. That's it.
Now, you put down Fire and Police and Youth Commission. There's no openings on the Fire and Police Commission.
So I was at the library when they were having that mental awareness week.
Okay.
So I had stopped at each station, and the police station was there as well, and I said, "How can I get involved in the youth?" Just because I have teenagers and the things that I experienced with them in school. So that's why I had selected the police department.
Okay. How about the Youth Commission? That's obviously involved with the youth.
Yeah, that's one of the other areas that I'm interested in.
Okay. Trustee Arnett?
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for volunteering your time. We do appreciate it.
Trustee Stanton?
How many people are on the Youth Commission now?
Five or so. There's not very many.
Boy, we've come down in the world on that, too, huh?
Yeah, that one needs, that one needs new blood, too.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And we'll be loving to have you.
Thank you.
Great. Trustee Mills?
Well, I just want to thank you for volunteering and wanting to get involved, and I think the Youth Commission is an excellent committee for you to go on, because they do need people who want to help the kids, especially teenagers.
Yes.
So thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Trustee Noel?
Good luck with teenagers. That's all I can.
I need it.
But thank you, in the meantime, volunteering and going for the Youth Commission. It's a great commission, you know, so you can have firsthand experience, but at least two of them, right?
Exactly. I want to share my experience of what's happening and see where I can help and.
Very good. Thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Hey, Trustee Palafis?
Yeah, I just also echo my thanks, and they'll be really excited to have you.
Thank you.
Come with lots of new ideas and things you can do, and they'll love it.
Yep.
That's great. Well, make the appointment in two weeks. You don't have to be here, but you will be informed and be on the committee.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Chair would take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Any no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the General Administration and Personnel Committee meeting for July 7, 2025. Could I please get a roll call?
Chairman Kinnane.
Present.
Vice Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from June 9, 2025. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections, or additions to those minutes? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no public comment tonight, or is anybody out there that would like to comment on this committee? Okay. No old business, no new business, and item six under reports. We'll mark received and filed, the cable TV monthly report. Next is the Human Resources Management Monthly Report. Anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. And I need a motion for the deferment of the Legislative Operations and Outreach Monthly Report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. President, do you have anything?
I'll wait for the board meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. There are no items in review and nothing listed under other. Could I please get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Transportation and Road Improvement for Monday, July 7, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Vice Chairman Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Move on to the approval of minutes for June 9, 2025 for the Transportation and Road Improvement Committee.
So moved. Second.
Any, have any corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The approval has been carried. Anybody wish to make a public comment for this committee for this evening?
Yep, we do have one, for sure. Mr. Kim?
Can you state your name and your address, please, sir?
Yes, my name's Han Kim, 4891 Thornbark Drive, 60010.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity to address the board today. Thank you, Eric, for the very responsive email that I sent a couple of weeks ago, and you said that this was a great opportunity to address the, sort of, the safety issues with e-scooters and e-bikes on sidewalks. As I alluded to you earlier in front of the board, I live right across the street from Holy Family, and I like to make a little, you know, stroll down to Jalisco on occasions, and typically, in the last two years, I would say I got almost hit by a scooter going about 30, 40 miles per hour on a four and a half-wide sidewalk, some coming back or behind me, or some come in front of me. Those are very silent, so you don't really see them coming. So Eric said just to address maybe three minutes of possible solutions. I think we know the, I don't know if you'd agree, but the public health, safety issues with these e-scooters, you know, they're really cheap now, and everybody has them. I would love to get one, but unfortunately, a little too old for that. But I think there's some opportunities there to increase the public safety around the area, at least Hoffman Estates, adopting some of the ordinance that Hinsdale and Elgin has. I believe Hinsdale just came up with that ordinance of a fine for $750, $1,000 for riding on sidewalks. And, yeah, even in streets, backed up a couple of times onto the streets out of my driveway, almost hit a couple of e-scooters, right? Some cars cannot detect since these small vehicles coming back and forth, so I just hope that something non-fatal happens in the future with these rampant e-scooters and e-bikes, eboards, that's coming in our city or village. So I don't know the solution, but I would love to talk to you more about that, and if the board could address some opportunities to get an ordinance to curb this, you know, public health burden.
Thank you. We do appreciate your comments and your concern.
Thank you.
If there is somebody else that would like to address the committee, we'll go ahead and move on to our new business, a approval of an ordinance amending section 6-2-1-HE-11- -13, 14, electric bikes and electric scooters.
So moved. Second.
Who's going to take this one? Eric, chief?
I'll take it. So with the increase in popularity of e-bikes and e-scooters and some public demand to amend some ordinances, this has prompted many municipalities to look at their ordinances. Upon looking at ours, our current ordinance lumps motor-driven cycles and electric cycles together in the ordinance and prohibits all of it. So what it doesn't do is it doesn't break down the definition, and it does not address e-scooters versus e-bikes. So that's what we're proposing tonight, is to provide some of that information. When we looked at amending our ordinance, we looked at state law. State law now requires that the low-speed electric bikes are allowed on any highway, street, or roadway authorized for use by bicycles. So currently, our ordinance is in conflict with that as well. When considering the amendment, we also looked at the towns around us, the villages around us that share a transportation network with us, and Schaumburg's a big one. We intersect a lot with Schaumburg. So the ordinance that we are opening up for discussion is basically Schaumburg's ordinance and state law. It pretty much spells out what they have put in place, and it allows us to be in compliance with state law. So first of all, for definitions, e-bikes fall into three classes currently. The first class, you have the motor assistance when pedaling, and the motor stops when you stop pedaling, and they have an excess speed of 20 miles per hour. If you look at Class II electric bikes, they have motor assistance without pedaling. They also top out at 20 miles an hour, and the motor will stop when you brake. The Class III, it's the motor assistance without pedaling, the motor stops when you stop pedaling, and that stops at 28 miles an hour. I've heard a lot of people say that they know some e-bikes go 40 miles an hour, 50 miles an hour. There may be some out there, but these are the classes that the state recognizes. It's also illegal to modify your e-bike to a different speed, and that is by state law as well. So currently, the state law regulates that you must be 16 years of age if you're riding a Class III e-bike. We are proposing that you must be 16 years of age to ride a Class I, II, or III e-bike. And again, that is in compliance with several other ordinances that have now been put into place. All Class I and Class II e-bikes, we would be permitting to operate in the same designated streets, paths, and locations as other bicycles, and all Class III e-bikes are allowed only on the street. So this keeps them off the bike paths, and ever, all e-bikes are prohibited from sidewalks. Electric scooters, there are two types. There is the electric scooter that exceeds 10 miles an hour, and then there's the low-speed electric scooter that operates at a maximum of 10 miles per hour. E-scooters are prohibited, so no low-speed e-scooters would be permitted on state highways, village streets, sidewalks, or paths. Electric scooters, the faster ones, are prohibited on village sidewalks and paths, and they'd be allowed on the street in the same location as bicycles, and this would be in compliance with the Illinois Vehicle Code. All e-bikes and all e-scooters would have to comply with the state rules and the vehicle code. E-scooters, you must be 18 years of age to operate, and that is also a state So if we were to go with these ordinance changes, I know the question has come up is how would we enforce this, and it would be very difficult, I won't lie. It's like many of our other calls for service, when we get the call, when we get there, they're gone, right? So I would anticipate an e-scooter or an e-bike moving, we'd have the same issues. However, where we have found a lot of success, and we deal with this with motorbikes right now, is you have offenders that frequent the same area. So if we know that that's a problem, we could put that enforcement in that area. Also, a lot of times, people know that it's their neighbors. We've gotten calls where they said, "My neighbor drives this motorbike around," and we determine where that's at. Initially, for the first few months, I think that we would be heavy on enforcement, or an education rather than enforcement. So I think it'd be important to let the public know what our new ordinance says, what the rules are, and educating the parents. I think a lot of people would comply with it, and then I think we would just go from there. It may be where we'd have to change this in the future, but I think that unless we start trying to educate and enforce, that we need a place to start, if that makes any sense. For continual noncompliance, and this would be in extreme cases, we're stopping the same person over and over again. We do have it in the ordinance right now that we could impound the e-bike or e-scooter for a 24-hour period, and that would come with a $100 fee at our adjudication hearing. So this is probably the easiest thing to follow from everything that I just said. What we're proposing is the no motor-driven vehicles, so your mopeds, your motorbikes, those are prohibited, period. The Class I e-bike and the Class II e-bike would be allowed on public streets and public paths, and then the Class III e-bike would be allowed on the public street, following the IVC rules. All low-speed e-scooters would be prohibited, period, and then the e-scooters that exceed 10 miles per hour would be allowed on the public streets, again, following the IVC, the rules of the road. So I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
Trustee Kinnane?
Thank you, Chief, for that explanation. As we corresponded over the weekend, I'll be the first one to say this, that I think this is an unfunded mandate. I agree we need the ordinance, but we're adding another layer of enforcement into your department. There's been numerous complaints by the public about, you know, regulating these things, and I know that your department is fairly busy with handling other calls for service. Couple with that, you know, there's complaints all the time about traffic, cars, and trucks not obeying law, and you're stretched just to try to, you know, do targeted enforcement or anything with that. But, you know, the reality is, you know, people are going to call in, and they're going to say, "Well, there's some kid, Johnny, driving down the street with his e-bike doing 50 miles an hour," but they're going to list the complaint as either Mr. or Mrs. Anonymous. And unless the officer can witness the actual infraction, there's nothing that realistically, correct me if I'm wrong, that your officers are going to do. They're going to get there, tie up their time, maybe sit around for a few minutes, observe nothing, and then move on. But in the meantime, what else is going in on the town that now we've got an officer tied up doing this, where maybe they could be doing selective traffic enforcement or other public concerns handling those things? So I'm in favor of an ordinance, but I think at this point, you know, let's put it on the books and see what happens. I agree with you. Let's educate the public. But I don't necessarily know if officer wants to be stopping, you know, Johnny who's eight years old, pulling him over and impounding his whatever he's got. And I got to tell you, in my neighborhood, they're riding mini bikes, they're riding motocross bikes, they're riding e-bikes. I've talked to guys, they're modifying these things. One guy I know personally, I mean, he's got them going 60 miles an hour with his modifications. So I'm just saying, it's out there, it's going to generate a lot of calls, but I'd be interested down the road to see the actual percentage versus calls versus actual any type of action taken. I hope in your system you can, maybe three, four months down the road, kind of tell us, you know, "Yeah, we've gotten 100 complaints, but we've only had two instances where we've apprehended or issued a ticket or consulted with the individual riding." I mean, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but.
No, you're correct. And we would monitor and keep track of how this is going. Keep in mind, we also have CSOs, and our CSOs could be tasked with this as well. So I don't anticipate a squad car running out, getting into a pursuit with an e-bike. That's not what we're looking for here. So, but we are looking to have something in our toolbox to be able to address these issues when they come up.
Yeah, and I think the thing you mentioned in our correspondence was the fact is if there is an accident or incident involving one of these vehicle devices in a car or something like that, it does give you some lines of enforcement to follow up on that as far as if citations are issued or anything like that.
Correct.
Chief, how about opening up, like, the safety meetings in each area location, but only open it up for the e-bikes and electric scooters with that, because then you're opening it up to, you know, the public in the areas where you know it's most affected by, seeing if we get more people to come out?
Yep, could definitely do that.
Trustee Mills?
Couple things. First of all, it would seem to be confusing to me how you would evaluate whether it's a Class I, II, or III e-bike. You know, I mean, it's all a matter of watching everything they do. Why wouldn't it be just one class all the way across?
So by law, they are required to have a sticker on the bike that comes from the manufacturer that gives you the class of the bike and the max speed of the bike.
Oh, okay.
So that makes it a little bit easier for us.
Okay, good. And what is the reasoning for the different age qualification? 16 for one and 18 for the other?
State law for e-scooters is 18.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
So that we're really just following state law when it comes to that.
Okay. We don't require helmets, though, do we?
Correct. We don't require helmets right now. You know, the state of Illinois does not require helmets for motorcycles either, and for that, I think we depend on the parents to have some liability there and accountability and do what's safe.
Okay. The last thing that I would think of, too, was, there went out of my head again. It'll come back to me. I know. Sorry.
Go ahead. Trustee Stanton?
Thank you. Excuse me. In page two of the ordinance that you have put before us, on section B, it says, "No person shall operate motor-driven devices upon any public or private street, public sidewalk, parking lot, bike path, or public park." Do we have the right to say "public park"?
We're working with the Park District on making sure that we can have some kind of reciprocal agreement with them, but they will have to have something in their ordinance as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can put that in, though, in our ordinance to prohibit from the public park. We don't have the authority. Okay, now we got to section D, operations of electric scooters. Says, "Any low-speed electric scooter shall be prohibited on village streets, sidewalks, and paths," and I understand on the diagrams you put out here, everything is prohibited. They only go 10 miles an hour. Why are they prohibited?
Because they're not meant for the roadways, so if we want to keep them off of the bike paths and the sidewalks, our only other option is to put them on the streets, and if they only go up to 10 miles per hour, that is actually more dangerous for them to be on the streets.
You have kids riding bicycles that go at least 10 miles an hour, both on bikes, sidewalks, and on streets. So I'm not sure that this is any more dangerous than a kid riding a bike on the street. Also, in section five of that D, you've got, "Any operator or an electric scooter or a low-speed electric scooter shall be at least 18 years of age." I mean, if we're going to outlaw the low-speed electric scooters, that shouldn't even be on there, right?
We left it in there because it is state law, but you are correct.
Okay. Let's see. It's number six. Users of electric scooters or low-speed electric scooters, then skip around, says, "But not limited to the streets, roadways, paths, and sidewalks." Now, that seems to say that electric scooters are prohibited also completely, not just the low-speed electric scooters.
I'm sorry, Trustee Stanton. Where are you then?
Number six.
Under D.
Yeah, it says, "Users of electric scooters or low-speed electric scooters shall not be intended users of any portion of the village's transportation network as defined by the Illinois Vehicle Code." But basically, we're also saying already that they are going to be allowed on streets and paths, I thought it was, for the electric scooters.
So consulting with legal when we put this together, that has to do with tort immunity? That was suggested language for that, for liability reasons?
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. Yeah, that doesn't make sense. I guess that's it for me. As far as the low-speed scooters, I don't know why we would prohibit them, to be honest with you, since they're not the other ones. I'd rather prohibit than the low-speed ones, but that's just me.
Trustee Poloffis.
So the tort immunity is such that if we don't do anything, we're at liability. So we have to pass something tonight?
No, not tonight. It's just saying that if there is an incident that occurs...
Right.
And you have allowed certain things to allow in your community, that you could be held liable. Correct me legal if I am wrong.
Right. Jana, could you come up, please, and just...
I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
In a different way.
Yeah, so the Tort Immunity Act, when you now allow them, when you pass an ordinance allowing them, that's where the, some lawyers and the IML have suggested that there could be some liability there. So that language in that section, is it D6? That was originally included in the proposed statute. That was a language that the IML wanted in the statute that the state legislature ultimately took out. So our intention is, because we are going to be allowing the electric scooters, which some people feel opens us up to some liability, using that language puts some of that protection from the Tort Immunity Act back. Obviously, these are new ordinances, they're not well-tested in the courts, so that's just, you know, the suggested attempt at protecting the village from that liability.
Right. Thank you. I've had the benefit of being on the Schaumburg Pedestrian and Bike Ways Advisory Committee that the mayor appoints me to, and their mayor, and I've watched this being kicked around over there through their committees and the board for the last number of months, and as well as talking to Chief Colley. My two concerns about this ordinance is, number one, we can write the best ordinance in the world, you know, and Jenny could win awards for it and everything, but unless we enforce it, it's just a piece of paper. And I think we have to do something. I'm glad to hear CSOs could cover this, because I don't want to turn our police department into the scooter police. The only thing I have wrong with this ordinance is the $50 fine, way, way too low, in my opinion. I like Mr. Kim's citation of Elgin, where it's somewhere between 750 and 1,000, because then people are going to take it serious. You know, and I don't want our police to be parenting, you know, people that are on these devices that are little. And it's not a matter of if something happens, it's eventually going to. And then we're going to have a different situation.
Trustee Newell, do you have something?
Yeah, first of all, I remember the question I was going to ask. How, don't we have some rules of the road for bicycles?
They have to follow the rules of the road of vehicles.
I think that's something that needs to be stressed, no matter what, because these kids don't really follow them. I had an incident where I was pulling out of a driveway and this kid on a bike, I just missed him, you know, because he went zooming by on the wrong side of the road. I think it'd be a good idea to put together, if we, whatever we do with this ordinance, we need to put together a pamphlet that would be passed out. A good reference would be online, on our website, in the schools everywhere, there where these kids are, just to get them reacquainted with what goes on, and they can get the parents reacquainted. I like Karen Arnett's idea about doing some localized group meetings, just to get the input and get these parents aware of what goes on. Now, as to the discussion regarding tort immunity, wouldn't we already be covered because our current code prohibits all of them until something gets passed today or whenever?
Got an answer for that, Art?
Jenna?
Yeah. Because we...
So we're covered right now. Okay. That's what I thought.
That's what Elk Grove did. They prohibited everything.
Yeah. And that was done many years ago, that we put that one in there. But I would just like to bounce this thing around a little bit before we make any final decisions.
Trustee Newell.
Yes. For real?
Yeah.
Okay. We're good. Okay, just a couple of things. This is kind of silly, but I don't know. What if they had to register these things? Once upon a time, and I remember years ago, just a regular bicycle, there was nothing on it except two wheels and a set of handlebars, you had to register it, and you had to have a sticker on it. But then that way, they had the name, address, you know, that this person owns this bike in case it gets stolen or gotten in an accident. I don't know. It would be more work, but here would be the other thing. What if, like, the officers that we have at school, you know, they come in, they do the officer-friendly and all this, maybe have a short session, five minutes, that, hey, and then if, going off of Trustee Mills, what she was saying, if you register, then they get a pamphlet, and here's the rules, so that they're like aware, so that they don't say, "Well, I didn't know nothing about this," you know, until they see, whoop, a $75 fine, you know, oh my gosh. The other thing is, and this is not just for bikes, this is for walkers, this is for a lot of people, they need to wear reflective clothing, okay? And I don't care if it's daylight or nighttime, because they're on these bikes, they're walking, and they, you know, they see a car pulling up or pulling out, and they walk right behind you. And it's a little late until your car says, eh, there's somebody behind you. So I don't know. Maybe that's something the state has to change, but people got to get to be aware of this stuff, you know, or just, I don't know. That's all I had.
Trustee Stanton.
All right, I have a question. What is the implication of the Juvenile Justice Act for enforcement of this?
About court act.
I thought you have justice.
About court act.
Okay.
Just say that.
What is the implication of the Juvenile Court Act for enforcement?
We would follow all the juvenile laws that we follow now. This is an administrative citation, which we plan on addressing with the parents.
Art, what do you know about this?
Yeah, I, on the administrative adjudication, I don't think the Juvenile Court Act would come into play, but to do anything else, I don't know how you could arrest a juvenile without following the act.
We don't plan on arresting juvie, this is not an arrestable offense. These are citations, these are ordinance citations.
Okay. I was just...
Yeah.
And the citations are going to the parents, not to the children?
Correct.
The citation goes to the parents?
Yes.
Yes.
If they're under 18 years old.
Trustee Poloffis.
I would not view a $50 citation as serious. I don't know how to emphasize that more, but one of the things that Schaumburg's doing, which, you know, I kind of read the chief in on, and maybe Eric as well, is their Bike Ways Advisory Committee, which we have one, too, we have a bike committee, they hire two interns. And a number of years ago, Mr. Norris put in some budget money, I think it got taken out because we never acted on it, to add to theirs, so they could extend their domain of riding the paths, which they write up, you know, when there's imperfections or things that need to be fixed, which more or less, you know, hit the public worksite or transportation. And then they also do a lot of education, so they do a lot of community education. So one of the things I'd like to see us entertain is maybe an intergovernmental agreement with Schaumburg, to add on to something they're already doing that's very successful around education, and, you know, younger people that are already riding bikes or e-bikes that, you know, are doing those educational moments that are closer to their age. So there's some really good examples of things out there that I think, like Trustee Mills said, if we, if we slow-walk this a little more, you know, and become more educated on, that it, I think it'll be more palatable to the community at large. But there is a lot of risk by accepting anything that the state already prohibits today. So this is some ideas that I wanted to throw.
Mayor has a question.
Mayor?
Yes, support the ordinance. I think we need to do something that seems reasonable. I have a receipt of an email I got from somebody, and I said that I would read it at the meeting. Number 1, how do we enforce wearing helmets, no matter what age? This should be required on any scooter bike. Why are e-scooters 18, but bikes are 16? That seems like it should be the same age. Could drive a car but can't use an e-scooter. 3, why can't we use public paths? And once I know I've taken an e-scooter to Harper, I use that path, but now I need to use the street. 4, I'm sure passing this and getting communication out will impact folks from buying these for future kids, but kids who have them now will be impacted, should be minimal if it gets passed quickly. How would police enforce it? If a kid doesn't have an ID that shows age, how do they know? How would a kid get home if not with a parent? I'm sure that is something that police would handle and train on best practices. 5, I assume we'll partner with Palatine and other connecting cities as this continues to grow. 6, e-scooters at a 10 miles per hour are confusing. Is that the max speed of the scooter? Or is someone that's riding the scooter less than a max? I have a scooter that has a max speed of 18, but the app allows me to restrict top speed. Last question would be, when would this take effect? I know what the cities did July 1st. Like I said, above the sooner the better to lessen the impact of many future purchases for kids, but also with those that might have them, it might be nice to allow them till the end of summer, fall. That's just one of our citizens.
Trustee Kinnane, sorry.
Getting back to the $1,000 fine, people commit major traffic violations and don't see a $1,000 ticket, and I think that's a little ridiculous. I think, you know, parents receiving high-end tickets for a scooter or an electric bike, there would be a lot of pushback. I would prefer to see, you know, start at $50, maybe a second citation 50, and then a minor escalation, you know, uptick on those citations, you know? And, you know, I have two teenage kids, and, you know, everybody's got these things, everybody's riding them, I see them all the time up and down my streets. I thank God, most of them are wearing helmets, and most of them are riding in the street. Yeah, they're not too respectful of the traffic laws buzzing through stop signs, but, you know, but the other thing is, yeah, we can educate them, but it's a craze. It's a fad right now. You know, it's like kids going to the jewel store for Pokemon cards and standing in front of the machine, waiting for it to recycle. I just don't see a lot of kids showing up to say, "Hey, educate me on these things," out of fear that you'll recognize my face and my bike, and maybe know where I live, and now I might come under the wrath of, you know, the department. They're going to be there, you know, and we can do our very best to enforce them, to create a safe environment, a safe haven for them. And I just want to say, I go back to being when I was a kid, you know, I had an ATC-90 Honda riding up and down the street, and I got pulled over by the police, and I thought, "Oh, no. How am I going to explain this to my father?" He stopped me because he wanted to try it, okay? So I'm saying, they're kids, you know, and they're going to do goofy things, and that's what kids are about. But we need to do something, but I think we have to be, you know, kind of proceed cautiously and slowly in this matter, not rush to judgment. And I'm taking the side of maybe these kids that, yeah, they'll get a little scared from the police pulling them over with a warning, "Hey, I see, again, you're going to get a ticket, and it's going to go to your father," and he may not be too happy. But I just, I just don't think these are going to go away because we pass an ordinance, and I think people are still going to be upset seeing them on the streets and calling in and generating tickets, and, you know, it's a slippery slope that we're going to be climbing here. So I just want to make, put that out there to everybody. Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, two things real quick. One, when it comes to the fine, and certainly the board can adjust it if it sees fit, but the general operating principle from the village staff when it comes to local ordinance enforcement is compliance. So whether it's weeds in your front yard or peeling paint on the side of your house, we're not trying to hit people with fines, we're trying to get people to comply with the code, right? And so if we notice something and we issue a violation notice, and people come into compliance, there's no fine, and hopefully we move about our merry way. So that's always the spirit of what we're trying to do as a village staff. I anticipate with the police department and others, that same kind of principle would be there, right? We, if we were able to track some people down, figure out what's going on, and we educate and we explain what's going on, we certainly share the penalties on what they are, but if we can get compliance and people are cooperative, and then we all go about our merry ways, that's really kind of the spirit by which we do things. And then secondarily, depending on what the board does tonight, if it does decide to table this or kick it out to a meeting, if there's additional information that you need to help make your decision, please let us know, and we can pull that together.
Trustee Stanton.
I have to ask, what was the rationale for prohibiting low-speed electric scooters from anything?
I believe that goes back to the tort immunity that Jana discussed.
Yeah, like I said, it doesn't make sense that we would outlaw those if we're allowing bikes at the same speed.
I might be able to answer that question a little bit. Under the Tort Immunity Act, one of the things that you look at is whether the individual was, and, allowed or intended and allowed to use the street. So there's a lot of cases that hold when a pedestrian is walking down the street and trips on a hole, they say the village is not liable because it was never intended that the street should be used for pedestrian walking. But when you say, "Oh, you're allowed to use the streets," and this goes to bike paths, all of a sudden, you're at a different standard. So now, all of a sudden, the surface, instead of having to be safe for an automobile, has to be safe for a bicycle. And that's where the Tort Immunity Act comes into play, intended and permitted, I believe, are the words. And so if you outlaw, and you say you cannot use a bike on a street, then if there, or an electric scooter, then if the electric scooter is on the street, hits a pothole, which would be non-dangerous to a car, but maybe very dangerous to a scooter, the village, it just makes it more directly obvious that the village never intended, as a matter of fact, they outlawed scooters and bikes from being used on the street. And I'm just addressing the Tort Immunity Act and as to why that might come into play. It is, and early on, I, my predecessor always was against, I understand, was always against bike paths for that reason, all of a sudden. Now, the liability, you have to maintain all bike paths to be at a higher level of maintenance than you would a street. And I don't disagree with that as a legal principle, but as a political principle, you've got to decide which way you're going. But I just wanted to make that statement to kind of maybe answer the question as to the Tort Immunity Act.
It doesn't really answer it, because we're allowing e-scooters that go 10 miles an hour or faster on the streets. There's no difference to me as far as whether it's 10 miles an hour or faster. If you're allowing one, you should be allowing the other.
Trustee Mills.
Just to answer Trustee Stanton's, as I recall back when that code was put in, there wasn't anything like an electric bike. I think it was more aimed to the little kids who had those electric cop cars and little buggies, that you couldn't see if you were driving down the street, and all of a sudden, there they were. And the electric scooters that were just coming out back then, nothing like now. But I think that was part of the discussion back then, so...
I'm just saying, if you're going to allow one scooter, you should be allowing both. I'm just saying, if you're gonna allow one scooter, you should be allowing both.
That's all. Would it be okay for me to say that I think maybe we should table this for tonight until we get more information and have staff or whoever come back to us based on our comments, our concerns, and maybe readdress it in a couple of weeks? Just throwing that out there.
Trustee Plafis.
What information do you want?
I haven't heard anything that we've asked them yet for.
Well, I'm saying how Gary, Trustee Stanton was saying, you know, why we're outlawing one and that we're not outlawing another. You know, that's, that's one of the things is if we're allowing one, we should allow them all. I mean, I understand that there's TORT immunity issues and other things involved in it, but the reality is, is we can legislate it to death, but it's still gonna be happening. Those kids are still gonna be out there and.
I don't see that we're passing this ordinance for the kids. It's the parents that are allowing the kids. Can we agree on that?
No.
I agree on it.
Because parenting is a whole new thing these days. I mean, I know a lot of, you know, having teenage kids, you know, parents are working one and two jobs, the kids are kind of left to their own demise or whatever you want to call it. You know, I just, you know, I mean, I support the ordinance, but at the same time, I think we're on the premises that if you show up at a parent's door with the kid in hand, that something's gonna happen. Or that because we put our officers out in the field to do educational, they're gonna, everybody's gonna show up to be educated. You know, I think if anything, I think the people that'll be coming to the education things will be the parent, the people that are opposed to them and wanting to gather more information. I just don't see a herd of kids showing up and saying, yeah, educate us, because they're still gonna do it. That's all I'm saying. I mean, it's a new age out there. And you could take the kids home and knock on the door and there might be a chance the parents aren't even home because they're working or doing whatever. And then what do you do? You know? I'm just, having kids and kind of knowing my, my, my kids and their friends and everything, I kind of sense different things out there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the chief had mentioned something about the state. Where's the state on the different levels of e-scooters?
The state requires you to be eighteen years old. And then they are letting municipalities make the decision as to how they want to allow it or prohibit it.
But the state says you gotta be eighteen.
Correct.
Well, and this is what Schaumburg is doing too, correct?
It is.
Right. So you could, to Trustee Stan's point, you could take the approach and just ban them all, right? No scooters whatsoever, right? However, then you're gonna have an ordinance that's inconsistent with Schaumburg. And one of the things Trustee Plafis brought up to me at one point was when kids are leaving Schaumburg to go to Hoffman Estates School, comes through Hoffman Estates and now is not compliant with the, our ordinance, but is compliant in Schaumburg. And that's one of the other challenges with all this, is that all the interconnectivity of all these things with all of our neighboring communities. So that's part of the reason this thing is built the way it is, is to provide those regulations in a seamless manner.
I see Mills.
I'm going to make an attempt to make a motion here that we defer action on this item until the next monthly committee meeting. And during that time, if staff could look into other municipalities so we have a comparison of what they are doing regarding this issue. Because what I'm hearing and what I've been reading, many towns are starting to put something together. And it should be a more unified front, but I'd like to see what other towns actually have put into practice. So I'd ask to make the motion to defer.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we do have a motion to defer on this ordinance. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion has been passed. Do we need to make another motion for anything?
Uh-uh.
All right. It'll be, it'll, it'll be on the next meeting agenda for this committee.
Or else just put him in writing for the, you know, for us. He could put his.
He's got, he's got time left. He can, if, it's the discretion of the chair.
Do you want to come back up here?
Thank you again, the board, for addressing this. And I have a public health background and also worked for a pharma company and consulting. I left public health because it's easier to twist metal than bend arms here. So the thing, I've been thinking about this for the last three, three weeks, and Eric has been really gracious to have me on here. It's, I think the board is probably grappling with if this is a problem. So I'm a data junkie and perhaps you could look at Hinsdale's before and after and see what their ordinance was, I think it was seven hundred and fifty dollars, and straight, no scooter, e-bikes on sidewalks. So I would say from a health, public health burden is on, burden is on the both sides. It's the people riding it and also the pedestrians or people trying to swerve, you know, away from these vehicles. So I would say, if you want to get the answer of that problem, then yes, maybe look at the data of Hinsdale and maybe Schaumburg and see what happened before and after, how many calls they got regarding the complaints. Because you're right, the police, I don't think they want to come out for calls like this. Johnny's gonna always ride his bike, come for everything like that, but at the end of the day, you want to be a little more cautious about people, pedestrians, who are trying to swerve, you know, away from these. And then the other pieces, again, you want a very sensible, efficient, you know, ordinance or policy. You're, again, calling the police every time something happens, it's gonna be a public health burden. So at least, hopefully that gives you some recommendation in terms of trying to figure out possible problems and what happened before and after and how it might impact the cost of what happened before and what happened afterwards. So I'm just, those are my recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to reports for information only. Transportation Division Month Report, anything to add? Nothing? Okay, we'll receive and file that. President's report, Mr. Mayor.
I'll wait for the board meeting, Trustee Arnett.
Thank you. Nothing in items reviewed, nothing in other. I mean, we have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates on this July seventh, two thousand twenty-five. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
Looking for approval of the minutes of Planning, Building and Zoning Committee of June ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody notice any corrections or deletions that need to be made? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Public comment, anybody who wishes to address us on something regarding the Planning, Building and Zoning Committee? And we'll go to new business. That is acceptance of the dedication of a right-of-way for municipal purposes along Freeman Road, south of Munt Hank Road. It's at ten South Freeman Road in South Barrington. Chair?
Sure. There, South Barrington recently approved a twenty-two lot subdivision. It's a property at the corner of Munt Hank and Freeman Road, within the boundaries already of the Village of South Barrington. As part of that development, there are two access points proposed, one along Munt Hank and one along Freeman. The Freeman Road right-of-way is under the Village of Hoffman Estates jurisdiction. So what staff has done is asked them to dedicate sixty-seven feet of right-of-way to have the full hundred foot of right-of-way that is presently dedicated just south of this property, along the Fanick property, to be consistent. So they have agreed to that and this request tonight is for the committee to consider acceptance of that dedication.
Is this a right-in, right-out or is this a full access?
It's a full access.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, then we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
No.
We don't have the motion?
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Thank you. Now we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Leads us to reports, we have three. Planning Division Monthly Report. Anybody have any questions on that? That'll be received and filed. The second is the Code Enforcement Division Monthly Report. Any questions up here on the board from that? Okay, that'll be received and filed. And third is the Economic Development and Tourism Monthly Report. Any questions from anyone up here? That'll be received and filed. President's report.
I'll wait for the board meeting, Trustee.
Okay. We have no items in review and nothing in other, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned. I know, I'm getting there. Gary, you got your finance committee?
I do now. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee Special Meeting for this evening, July seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Plafis.
Present.
Chairman Noel.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Oh.
Present.
The other one.
The other one.
Okay, present.
They're both present.
Trustee Stanton.
I'm present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present.
And we have a quorum. Any public comment for the Finance Special Committee meeting? Having none, we'll move on to new business, which is a request acknowledgement of receipt and filing of the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Question and second? Any questions? Comments? Rachel, would you like to embellish?
I will embellish slightly. First and foremost, I do want to recognize that we have with us tonight Brian LaFever. He's the principal with our auditing firm of Sickich. And so if there's ever a time that you wanted to ask something super, super complicated between Brian and I, I think we'd be able to, we'd be able to tackle your questions. So thanks to Brian for being here. So the village has concluded its financial audit for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four with positive results. Not only did we once again receive a clean audit opinion from the auditors, but the financial results of our general fund are more positive than we originally projected. So back in twenty-four, we had budgeted to use six point two million of general fund reserves to fund one-time capital purchases. However, we ended up not needing to dip into our reserves that, to that extent, we only had to decrease reserves by about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So these positive results are due primarily to several of our major revenues that have, that came in above budget, as well as all of our operating departments, all of these guys that sit behind me, do a really good job of keeping their expenses within budget. So I appreciate all that hard work that they do as well. We ended the year with our general fund having an unassigned fund balance of just under thirty-five percent, which as you know is well above our required twenty-five percent. And for the village in total, our assets exceeded our liabilities by seventy-nine point two million, giving us a positive net position. So again, Brian or I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have, and we're just looking for acknowledgement of receipt and filing of this report.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Brian, she said anything, do you have a perspective on e-scooters, e-bikes? Kidding, totally unfair. All right, having no questions or comments, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have a motion. Carrie, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, we're adjourned.
The regularly scheduled meeting of July, order on July seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Kinnane.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Plafis.
Present.
Mayor McCleod.
Present. Can everybody please rise? Trustee Stan, you want to leave us on the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Stan. Move on, I have now three public comments. Does anybody have a comment they want to make to the village board and the village staff at this point?
Kathy Gilroy had signed up.
Ms. Gilroy, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor McCleod, board members and staff. According to the Daily Herald, Hoffman Estates has taken the bold step of banning vape vending machines from your village. Please accept my congratulations. The story quoted village manager Eric Palm as follows, quote, "Village staff just doesn't feel that having these in establishments that could be more easily reached by minors and other people who shouldn't be buying them is appropriate," unquote. The vote by this board was unanimous. Your village has become a leader in this area. However, I didn't come here simply to congratulate you. I came here to ask you to consider an issue that is just as important, if not more so, than the declining rate of youth addiction to nicotine, that is the increasing rate of youth addiction to gambling. You already have vending machines in Hoffman Estates for an age-restricted product, machines that are not programmed to check for age, as the vape vending machines are lottery vending machines. It has been illegal to sell lottery tickets to minors in Illinois for fifty years. Thirty years ago, a doctor in central Illinois took a sixteen-year-old girl to fifty locations that sold lottery tickets. She bought a lottery ticket in forty-nine of those locations. I did my own sting with two fifteen-year-old boys who went into a grocery store unaccompanied with Channel Seven filming outside and returned shortly with their lottery tickets from the lottery vending machine. While they were being interviewed, a seventeen-year-old boy who was not associated with us came out of the store with a lottery ticket in hand. He said that he had been buying them there for two years, his mother cashing in a twenty-five hundred dollar winner for him. Soon after my sting, the Illinois Legislature made it illegal for minors to buy lottery tickets, effectively ending any further stings by the public. The Illinois Lottery, a state agency, has no oversight. The so-called Lottery Control Board pushes for higher lottery sales numbers. They responded to my FOIA request that only one instance of a retailer selling a lottery ticket to a minor in Illinois was recorded in twenty-five years. Yet a recent survey found that over seventy-five percent of students gamble. Which is easier for you to ban, student phones or lottery vending machines?
Fifteen seconds.
The other people who shouldn't be buying lottery tickets are those who have volunteered to be on the self-exclusion program because they have become so addicted to gambling. Now that you have seen the similarities in the two types of vending machines, don't discriminate. Please extend your leadership and take another bold step by now banning lottery vending machines in Hoffman Estates for the very same reasons that you banned vape vending machines.
I'm so.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Gilroy? If not, well, thank you for bringing that forward. We appreciate it. Move on to approval of the minutes of the village board meeting of six sixteen, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The village board special meeting of June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have to vote, yes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have a motion, carried. Move on to consent agenda, omnibus vote, chairs accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion.
We have a motion. We have seconded the items on the omnibus vote because the consent agenda consists of the following: A, approval of the agenda, and B, approval of the schedule of bills for 7/7/25, the amount of $5,216,971.49.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second for approval of the agenda and the paying of the bills. Any questions or concerns about this? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noam.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Move on to six. President's Report. Board Commission Appointments and Reappointments and Resignations. We have one resignation, Youssef Ahmed from the Arts Commission.
Moved to accept with regret.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. First off, we all want to wish Trustee Mills a very happy birthday tomorrow, and we had a little celebration prior to this meeting, so happy birthday, Trustee Mills.
Thank you.
We've had last few weeks, on Monday, the 23rd, we had two groundbreakings at Bell Works. One was for the beginning of the work on the west side of the building, and the second was for the new Bell Market on the eastern side, the new restaurant in Bell Works. So that was another great addition to have, and it's exciting to see the west side being developed. We did a meeting about permanent supporting housing that day also, and we had committee meetings and village board meetings on that day. Tuesday, the 24th, we had attended the Mayor's Caucus, Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus on public transit, and that's always an interesting deal with what's going on with the state. And Wednesday, the 25th, we had our Wine Wednesday at Red Robin, and Wednesday's coming up on the 16th at the Giriboldies, 4:30 to 6:30. Friday, we had practice to get Fun Day in the Park. On the 27th, Saturday, we had our Stars and Stripes event, the Run at Bell Works, and that was very well-attended. And on Tuesday, the 1st, I attended the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, the public transit meeting, of course, and also early in the day, the Cook County Board Meeting where I was reappointed to the Pace Suburban Bus Board for a four-year term. On Friday, the 4th, we had our St. Patrick's Day Parade. The weather cleared for the parade. It was amazing.
I mean, the 4th.
How about that? That was amazing. And on the 5th, Saturday, we had a block party at Dixon, which is always a very well-attended event. It was hot. And on Friday, the 4th, we had the drone show, and on the 5th, we had the fireworks, which were both very well-received. And today, we celebrated Trustee Mills's birthday, and we also had the golf planning committee meeting earlier that day for the Hope for Hoffman event that's coming up on July 23rd, Trustee Plafis.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great event at Poplar Creek, Bridges of Poplar Creek, so that's what I have. Move on to Trustee Comments, starting with Trustee Stanton.
Thank you, sir. On the 18th of June, I was able to attend the Senior Citizens Luncheon and help serve the food. On the 19th, I attended the Summer Sounds on the Green to hear the Four C Notes, which was a Frankie Valli Four Seasons look-alike, I guess, band. They did very well. And on the 21st of June, I attended the Eagle Court of Honor for Daniel Thomas Bell. On the 23rd of June, I attended the groundbreaking for the west side of Bell Works with the mayor, obviously, and also the 23rd, we attended the ribbon cutting for Bell Market in Bell Works. And then on the 27th of June, I attended the Mini Alzheimer's Walk at Brookdale with Trustee Newell and the mayor. And also on June 29th, I attended the block party at 665 Randy Lane. Went there a little earlier than our designated time to be there because we were going to be celebrating my wife's birthday at my daughter's house, but my wife and I both did attend the block party. And then on the 4th, I was there for the 4th of July Parade and handed out candy, as many of us all did. I was actually handing it out from the golf cart this year. Then later that day, my wife and I attended the drone show. We sat in our car at Tate and Lyle and saw a perfect view of the drones and what they did. On the 5th, my wife and I also worked the bingo ten from 5 to 7, and then we stayed for the fireworks, which started at 9:25. Had a visit from Bev Romanoff, and she was there also, and also Linda Fleming, who's also been involved with the Palatine Township. And then I want to wish a happy birthday to Karen Mills, which is actually tomorrow. Happy birthday, Karen.
Thank you.
Speaking of Trustee Mills, Trustee Mills.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate the 4th of July Committee for another excellent weekend of events. I've heard very good things about both the drones, drone show and the fireworks, as always. So you've done a lot of hard work, and it was appreciated by many, I'm sure. And then on Friday, I also was in one of the golf carts during the 4th of July Parade and had a great time, even though we were kind of running between raindrops, there were still quite a lot of people out on the parade route, toughening out the rain. So want to thank them all and hope they enjoyed it, even though the candy got a little bit wet. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, Trustee Newell.
Okay, mine's going to sound like laundry list, but here it goes. We're going to go back to the 18th, help serve the senior lunch at Moretti's, and then that evening, attended the Haverford Town Hall with State Rep. Moller, which Trustee Mills and Trustee Arnett and...
Let me see, who else? Patty.
Patty was there, right. Okay. On the 19th and the 26th, attended more of the Village Green Concerts, as Trustee Stanton had mentioned. The one, the last one, had a little bit of the clouds and the lightning, and it was a little bit shorter than normal. On the 21st, the Eagle Scout Ceremony for Daniel Bell. On the 27th, along with the mayor and several others, and did the Mini Alzheimer Walk at Brookdale, as Trustee Stanton had mentioned. On the 28th, along with Trustee Arnett, we attended the walk-off ceremony for Dan Kurzowinski. It was hard to say that there was a dry eye. It was a very emotional ceremony. Wish him the best. That evening, we attended the volleyball tournament at the Now Arena. On the 29th, the block party on Randy Lane. On the 4th, of course, the 4th of July Parade, in between raindrops, as Trustee Mills had said, but a very, very large crowd and very enthusiastic to be out there. And on the 5th, the block party on Dixon and fireworks in the evening, which were absolutely amazing, as always. Best finales. Happy birthday, Karen Mills.
Thank you.
And good job to the whole team that worked on the financial report. That's a lot of work to be able to put that all together and bring that in one piece. And that's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Plafis.
And we did a bunch of stuff these last couple of weeks. I attended the Hoffman Estates Special Leisure Services Foundation fundraiser golf outing. That's a mouthful. Over at Bridges, which was great. We had a great day. It was pretty hot, but a good outing, where they raised quite a bit of money. Attended the Partners of Our Community Board Meeting that I am on that represents the Hoffman Estates community. Attended a meeting for permanent housing with the mayor and Eric and some of the staff about some potentials around permanent supportive housing. Also attended Summer Sounds on the Green, where we had a Taylor Swift tribute band that was about four songs in and was unfortunately canceled due to lightning in the area and some pretty gusty winds. I wasn't too popular with about 400 young ladies under the age of 12. They were not happy, but it was pretty bad weather. And then the parade was awesome. Like Trustee Mills said, we were skipping between raindrops, but it was great that we got it in and well-attended. The Persons for Disability Carnival was amazing. Thank you to Dr. Marks and the Commission for all of the work that they do to organize this amazing event for the folks in our community that need an event that has less stimulus and easier access to those rides and games. My boys have a blast at that, as well as many of their friends. The drone show was amazing. It's funny, because we doubled the length, and everybody's like, "It's so short." I don't know what to tell Ben, but anyway, the fireworks were also amazing. My apologies for missing a couple of meetings last month. However, my wife, Michelle, and I were celebrating our 30th anniversary. I got her talked into leaving the country to go to Greece and then Lake Geneva. And happy birthday, Trustee Mills.
Well, happy anniversary to you.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Arnett.
Okay. Also, on June 18th, along with Trustee Newell, Trustee Mills, and Clerk Patty, also was able to attend the Town Hall at Haverford with Anna Moller. On the 21st, attended the Eagle Scout for Daniel Thomas Bell. On the 28th, did attend the walk-off for Dan Kurzowinski. Congratulations on his 27 years of service for this village. Very well-packed. Manager Palm was here as well. Also attended the volleyball USA versus Poland that Saturday night. Thank you, Ben Gibbs, for everything that you did for that entire week. It was jam-packed, not an empty seat in that house or the parking lot, any parking lot around. It was jam-packed. Also, on the 28th, attended the block party on Randy Lane for Lisa. Thank you for the 4th of July Committee for the parade and all the festivities you guys put on. Very well-done. And then also attended the block party for Jessica Weir on Dixon and Winston. And on the 5th, and that's all I have. And happy birthday to my left-handed counterpart over there, Trustee Mills.
Thank you.
Couple of lefties. Trustee Kinnane.
Thank you very much, Mayor. On the 21st, with Clerk Patty and the mayor, I attended the CAC's 5K run at Bell Works. It was extremely well-attended. On the 26th, I was present at the Knights of Columbus Officer Installation, where I was installed as Chancellor of the Knights of Columbus, which means in two years, I will be the Grand Knight of the Knights of Columbus. On July 3rd, I attended a Knights of Columbus Officer Meeting, and that same night, I attended a Knights of Columbus Planning Meeting. On the 4th of July, I walked with all my fellow trustees and clerk and the mayor in the 4th of July Parade. We were very fortunate that the rain held off long enough for us to enjoy it. And on the 5th, I attended the block party at Winston and Dixon, and happy birthday, Trustee Mills. Many more to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to six. C, Village Managers Report. Manager Poe.
Couple of quick things. One, the final tenant has left the office area over where the new Station 22 is going to go, so that was certainly an accomplishment for us. And so thanks to Dan O'Malley and Jana Dixon, who handled a lot of that work for us. So we are working with our current contractor on specs to go out to bid to demolish that property, so that will be happening later on this year. I do want to echo everyone's thanks to the village staff for the 4th of July efforts. There is a significant amount of work that goes on behind the scenes, just let alone the planning for it and the parade and those events, but the carnival and the music and everything that goes on, all the efforts from Public Works and Police and Fire, all the coordinations from Public Safety. I'm continually impressed by just the organization and the traffic side of things and the public safety. We had our drone in full operation over the weekend, helped find, reunite a kid with their parents, and just provided other situational awareness. Overall, just really tremendous effort by everyone, and very proud to be the village manager for this staff. And then also, the parking lot here will be starting to go under construction later this week. Some of the trees have been removed. Generally speaking, we will make sure the pathway are clear for the trustees to get to your spots at night, but certainly, just as an FYI, the proverbial pardon our dust will be in play over the next several months while we work on what ultimately is a full reconstruction of the parking lot, and that's all I have.
Well, it desperately needs to be reconstructed, is the question.
It's a little sad, yes.
Okay, and move on to six. D, Village Clerk's Report. Clerk Richter.
Yes, during the month of June, we processed 42 passports and 285 FOIA requests were responded to.
Thank you. Move on to seven. Plan Commission Recommendation. Chairperson Chetwani. Nice to see you. What you got for us?
The Plan Commission recommends the approval of an ordinance granting a sideyard setback variation for 510 Glendale Lane. The request will grant one foot setback from the sideyard lot instead of the required three feet.
Okay. Chair, accept a motion?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any questions on this item? Trustee Stanton.
Are we fining these people for putting up the structure before they even got approval?
Jennifer Horton will address that.
I'm not exactly sure of the status of the violation, but certainly, our intent is really for them to come into compliance, so I'm not sure that we would pursue the fine if they do come into compliance, get their building permit and the required variation.
I mean, it's not... What we usually would do is, you know, find someone for violating the code, correct?
Yeah.
And then making them tear the whole thing down. And in this case, we're not doing that at all. We're just going ahead and saying, "Okay."
Sure, yeah. If the variation isn't approved, the building permit won't be approved, and they will have to remove the structure.
If someone builds something without a permit and we subsequently approve it, do they have to pay more for a permit?
Yeah, if a structure's work is started before the permit's issued, the ordinance requires that the permit fees be doubled.
Was that done in this case?
Did they not have a...
They have not received their permit yet because they have to get their variation before that, but we will certainly follow up with the Building Division and make sure that they follow through with that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Any part of this request? Seeing none, can you call the roll?
Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Nay.
Trustee Arnett. Trustee Kinnane.
Nay.
Trustee Mills. Trustee Noam.
Nay.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion is denied. The request is denied.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairperson, and thank your committee for us. Okay, we'll move on to additional business. Eight A, approval of an ordinance, admitting session date 8-2-22, number of licenses of Article 3, alcoholic liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code. Chair, accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noam.
Aye.
Trustee Plafis.
Aye.
Eight B, this item was deferred in committee, so will be deferred here until after the subsequent committee meeting at least.
Need a motion for that, to deny?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to deny. Auditor defer till the next meeting.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have a motion carried. Eight C, request acknowledgement of receipt and filing of the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended December 31, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this? No discussion? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnane.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Noel.
Aye.
Trustee Plafas.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. Eight D, acceptance of the dedication of right-of-way for municipal purposes along Freeman Road south of Muntank Road, 10th South Freeman Road, south of Barrington. Chair, accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.